That's recording.
There we go. Good evening. I'd like to welcome you and call to order the October 13th, Port Orchard City Council regular meeting. Pursuant to the governor's stay at home and stay in safe order, the city will council will be conducting this meeting via Zoom. Zoom link and call in numbers have been posted to our website and and on this evening's agenda. That would you please join me in the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. A little flag has come in handy this year. Let's see here, we have a published agenda. Are there any amendments or or additions to this evening's agenda that anyone would like to see? Okay, I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
Mr. Mayor, I've moved that we approve the agenda as published.
Second. Motion by council member Clausen, a second by council member Kuchardi to approve the agenda as presented this evening. Any discussion of the agenda as published? Hearing none, all in favor of approving this agenda, please say aye.
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 Any imposed? You know, the agenda is approved. We are to our first citizen comment period, and I see no members of the public this evening on our on our Zoom meeting. So we have a second citizen comment period later in the evening. Maybe you'll have somebody join us by then. We are to our consent agenda and is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Mayor, I'd move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I think I got a motion by council member Kuchardi. I think that second was by council member Clausen. And any further discussion of the consent agenda? Hearing none, all in favor of approving the consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Hearing none, the consent agenda has been approved. We have a presentation this evening from our finance director Noah Crocker. He's going to talk to us about revenue sources. So Noah, I bet you want to share your screen. You're breaking up there a little bit.
Can you hear me now?
A little better, a little more volume would be nice.
I'm going to start off this evening's presentation by reviewing where we're at in the calendar of the biennial budget development.
Put that microphone a little closer to your mouth. I'm still not hearing you very well.
Is that any better? Okay, just gonna have to sideways this thing. All right. So I want to start off tonight's evening by first reviewing the calendar of the biennial budget and where we've come so far. Hopefully you're seeing my screen, which shows the budget calendar, which we have developed back in June. And so we are, we have climbed our way all the way to October. We have accomplished all the goals of me with the department and the mayor developing his budget and having that published October 1st. And remain available to the city council as well as the public. We met with the finance committee on October 5th to review the preliminary budget. And here we sit tonight for the council meeting to review a presentation on the revenue sources. And talk a little bit about the property tax. Again, the revenue sources presentation will lead to our October 27th council meeting. We will have a public hearing on revenue sources and adopt a property tax levy. And this year is a little bit different as well. Also be asking the council to adopt a substantial need ordinance. So we can collect the full 1% of property tax increases for next year. Starting next week, we will roll into our preliminary budget study session for the full council to digest and discuss. And we'll also have a whole day public hearing next week on the public on the preliminary 2122 budget hearing. Again, the 27th will hold a public revenue, public hearing on the revenue sources and hopefully adopt the ordinance for the property tax levy that night. Then starting in November, we are going to bring forward the financial policies which we discussed earlier in the budget calendar. For full council to ratify and adopt. We will also bring forward the final proposed budget after we get feedback from the council at the 20th session as well as any other comments in between. Now and the development of the final budget. So again, I just want to remind the council of the public hearing schedules that we have set forth and that we've been talking about. So with that, I'm going to switch gears, hopefully smoothly transition to the presentation for tonight. Which will be on our revenues presentation. Does everybody see that screen?
Yes.
Great. So again, tonight, we will be having a presentation on the revenue sources for the next biennial budget. This is to allow the council and public time to absorb the information prior to our preliminary budget presentation and hearing next week. Again, this presentation will lead to a property tax levy ordinance adoption on October 27th. And at which time we'll have a public hearing on the property tax levy. As required by RCW 8455120, we're required to hold a public hearing on revenue sources for the general fund in order to set a property tax levy for 2021. We will be having that public hearing on the 27th. Again, this meeting is to prepare for that and give us some advanced conversation and discussion on the revenue. So as we turn our attention to the general fund, which includes our current expense fund and our street fund for the 2122 biennial budget. We focus first on our total tax revenue dollars. And when we look at the total tax revenue, we have proposed a $20.858 million over the two-year period. In this slide, we identify three main taxing categories. Our sales tax budgeted at $10.575 million, representing the largest taxing source. Followed by our property tax at $6,110 million, representing the second largest taxing source. And rounded off finally with our other taxing sources in the other taxes category. In this slide, we provide greater detail on the three main taxing categories budgeted. We identified how we have allocated by fiscal year and the percentages of the overall tax sources that each represents. Again, sales tax is the largest taxing source, representing nearly nearly 50% of our biennial budgeted tax revenue. Property tax represents the other 30% of our biennial budget tax revenue. Again, with other taxes as a category making up the remaining 20%. Now of the other tax of the other taxes category, we identify electric tax, the telephone tax and utility tax. As the top three categories within other taxes, and that represents about 40% of the overall 20% of that category.
Noah, can I ask a question?
Sure.
Could you go back to that? Why do you indicate a reduction in telephone tax between 21 and 22?
That's a great question. And we cover a little bit of future slides, but I'll answer the question here. We have seen a decline in our telephone tax revenue. Over the last four years. So even in our current biennial budget, we did develop a 1920 budget, which was less than our 1718 biennial budget. So telephone taxes are on the decline. They're gradual, and that's why you see a slight $10,000 decline from 21 to 22.
Thank you.
Everybody getting rid of those home phones.
So on the next slide, we complete the whole biennial revenue picture by adding in all sources of funding. These other sources, these other revenue sources are identified in the smaller green pie chart. With a total anticipated revenue of roughly $4,660,000. The top three categories of these revenue sources are intergovernmental, which represent primarily federal and state grant revenue. More vehicle fuel tax and and paths and trails. Charges for goods and services is roughly $778,000 this biennial period. Which consists primarily of planning and court fees. And this is a reduction in the budget due to year-to-date activity that we've monitored for 2020 and anticipate will spill over into 212022. So goods and charges for goods and services, we anticipate to be down. License and permits are at 963,500. Again, primary drivers for this are business licenses and building permits, which have been on a nice steady increase. On this slide, we like to take a look at the comparison of the 2019 2020 budget with our proposed 2122 budget. This, I think, gives you a little better perspective on the revenue differences in the biennial periods. You'll notice that the total tax revenue we are budgeting is an increase of 1.8% or roughly 2% increase. Sales tax is the largest increase in that category 4.2. By dollars and then property tax 6.43%. Other taxes. And we'll come back to that. Why is that in the declining position? There's a number of taxes that we are observing and anticipate that will continue to decline in 211 due to COVID activity. Focusing on the other other category. Intergovernmental revenue represents probably about 50% of the revenue growth there. And that is due to our grant money from PFT. So $300,000 is what we are budgeting to receive from the PFT in the next biennial budget. Which represents the significant portion of that growth over the prior biennial period. Licenses and permits is budgeted to increase by about 19%. Now charges for services for our budgeted to decrease by about 12%. Again, adult probation charges are down, municipal court fees are down, a number of those categories in the policing sector are down on the revenue front. Again, we should rely that to COVID-19. Some of that decline also did start with our judge and court administering new policies. So while that was a slight, the COVID really did have an impact on those revenues. Similarly, fines and forfeits are budgeted to decrease by about 8%. Again, these are traffic infraction penalties. Criminal traffic penalties and public defense revenues are all down. And so we're forecasting that to continue to 2021 if COVID continues to play a role. That's important note that overall, we are anticipating about 4% increase in revenue. Over the biennial period. So I'm gonna pause there before, see if there's any questions before we move to the next categories.
Tax revenues down in 2019 and 2020 as well. I e charges for services and fines and penalties.
Yes.
Primarily our court.
Yes.
Bars aren't open. There's fewer DWIs, fewer criminal activities being arrested for you. You've got to. Chief, I mean, if you want to speak to that at all, I mean, you've got to be doing something pretty. Pretty, you know, we're trying not to, to a certain extent, aren't we, chief?
Yeah, so there's a, there's a couple of angles to this. So we have asked our officers to. In order to help protect the departments so that we can feel function to focus more on life safety issues as opposed to smaller issues of traffic. The jail has also significantly reduced their population for COVID-related reasons as well. So you combine that with the fact that a whole lot of people are not going anywhere and not being out in public. And us taking a step back to keep officers and staff safe. This is, this is what we're seeing. We would expect that to change over time as restrictions lift.
So we're also, we're seeing a drop in revenue here. We're also seeing a significant drop in our expense. Our jail bill is also down.
Is domestic violence incidences rising as well?
We haven't seen a significant increase. I would need to have a little bit more time to be able to see a data trend.
Thank you.
Yep. Are there questions for Noah on the revenue?
Okay, we'll move on to next slide. So the next slide I wanted to introduce because this is something that we haven't done, at least since I've been here. And I sent out some information from MSRC on the matter of IDP. And when the IDP is below 1%, the implicit price deflator. When it's below 1%, entities that are 2,000 or excuse me, 10,000 population and above. Are limited to a property tax increase to the IPD unless they take action and adopt what we call a substantial need ordinance. That allows us then to take the full 1%. So with this year's IPD at point 6, 0.6%. We will need to do the substantial need ordinance to levy our full 1%. So I just wanted to give this council an opportunity to talk about that and providing questions that you would want me to read back if there is anything. When we look at the substantial need, again, this is property tax and we use property tax for both our general fund and our street fund. That is how we split up our property tax revenue. So the substantial need that we are identifying as part of this ordinance will be really to continue to support our street fund. There's, we'll talk about this again next week. There's a substantial need for street funding. To to provide funding for our street preservation program as well as we're observing real declines in the more vehicle fuel tax revenue this by this fiscal year. So these are a couple of the things that we would point to in the ordinance as a need, the substantial need. And why we would support adopting a sexy, a second ordinance to tax the full 1% increase.
Noah, quick question. Is this an ordinance that would cover the two-year of the biennial budget or do we have to do this annually?
Yeah, great question. No, we would only do this annually. We adopt property tax levies annually. So this will be a one-year. And it's just like every other year.
And Sean, I'll call on you in just a second. And it also requires a super majority. So it takes five council members to approve that. So Sean, your question?
Yeah, I was gonna say, just for maybe ease of understanding for the council and any anybody that may end up watching tonight's meeting. Can we just talk about the dollars represented by taking this from 60% up to the full 1% or 0.6% up to the full 1%?
Yeah, yeah. And I think this is important where we need to be careful about when we throw up percentages because this is less than 1%. So it's 0.6% of a percent. And and so when we looked at the levy amount, what that's going to represent, that represents about $11,000 in estimated revenue.
Okay.
So the difference between the 0.6 and the one. So while it doesn't seem like a lot, as as many of the finance committee know, as we develop this budget. In particular for the street fund, every, every dollar matters.
Thank you for that, Noah.
And then on that too, it's a matter of compounding too, and in the future years.
Absolutely. But I see and want people to think that this is a multimillion dollar decision.
Right.
But it is important.
Okay, I will continue on then. So the next table, we provide information on the historic property tax data. And as well as 2020 tax levy to be adopted later this this month. Again, as we built this budget, we factored in the full levy ability. So I just want to keep pointing that out. For 2021, we are proposing a property tax levy amount of $3,431,000. It is important that Washington State actually has the most complex property tax methodology nationwide. And in Washington, as a budget-based system of property taxation. This means as part of the budget processes, the city must establish the amount of property tax revenue needed to fund the budget. And again, this amount is then called the levy. The city establishes the levy amount and the council will, the county will calculate their levy rate, rate required to raise that amount of revenue. The city will certify to the county by November 30th. And then for 21, we have identified a total of, again, 3,41,000 levy needed. Both these are subject to actions taken by the Fire District and Library District, which are unknown at this time, as they are also going through a budgeting process. So here's another table, just to illustrate the property tax over time. You see that we have seen some growth in property tax revenue collections. However, property tax collections in 2018 did not grow significantly due to the Fire District levy lid lift and the Library District's lid lift. So again, we emphasize that as we don't know what the other taxing districts will do. But if they take their full levy, then it does have an impact on the amount of levy that the city can receive.
If you note that 2011, 2012, I believe that was when. The ballot measure was passed and we no longer collected the property tax for the library district and passed it on to the library. We annexed into the library district and that tax went directly to them. So it came off of our tax rolls.
Yep, that is correct. Move on. This slide compares 21 to 22 and breaks down the total levy amount. The 2,962. Was the final levy amount in 2020. 2021, we can collect an additional $9,629. But at this point, we hit our lid. We then add in new construction to our tax dollars. We do not anticipate any annexations at this time. So we do not factor that in. And then we always put an estimate of $10,000 for state utilities. Again, at this time, it's just a placeholder. When all is completed and calculated, we may not be able to collect this $10,000. However, if it is not included in the levy now, then there is an increase in value. We will not benefit from it. Lastly, we are required by state statute to add in our refunds. This 15,492 represents monies that were paid out to property owners after going through the dispute process. And we are required to levy that refund amount and share against amongst all our taxpayers. And this brings the total levy of $3,501,000 for 2021.
Did you cover that again? Why that that's point 3.9 instead of 1% in 2021, the the increase? And only $9,000?
Let's see if I can.
Should be the addition to get it to the full 1%. That's the math going from the 0.6 of a one percentage point up to the one percentage point.
Gotcha. Well, what? Should it just be 1% if it? Well, I guess we can't assume.
No, because we hit our levy, historic levy lid. And so we can't go above that. And that's where that percentage flips. I'm, I can, I don't have a good illustration on this slide, but I can make a note to prepare that for ordinance adoption to have a better description and illustration of the calculation for the lid lift. Or not the lift, but the levy. So I'll make a note of that.
And that's really an estimate, isn't it? Because we can't take action on that till next year. Is that correct?
Well, we'll set the levy this year. Yeah, we'll set the levy this year, but we won't know the final levy amount until it's all tallied. But we will have to take action before we know, and this is our standard procedure. But by the time the county rolls around, they'll tell us next year where the levy amounts actually landed. So moving on to the retail sales and use tax revenue. This. This is an interesting year due to COVID as far as what we want to forecast and use as our sales and use tax revenue. Sabre sees 0.84% sales tax currently. And let's jump right in here. So when we look at the historic trends here from fiscal years and actual estimated. 2020 shows we are on track through three quarters. We've collected about 82% of what we estimated. We have experienced solid growth in actual sales tax revenue since 2015. And when we originally brought the preliminary budget to the finance committee to discuss the preliminary budget. There was a great discussion about the cities and councils appetite for sales tax revenue risk. And we since then increased the amount of sales tax revenue we would anticipate receiving to we have, till we have now 5,235,000 for 2021. And 500,340,000 in 2022. Again, there was a good discussion. We increased it by about $150,000 per year and to be dedicated to our street fund for pavement preservation. Again, as always with sales tax, the big concern relates to the economy and COVID's impact. But we discussed and felt that this was a palatable level of risk. And we felt that there was time within a biennial budget to review and reassess in the mid-year.
Yeah, I would just add to that, just to, just to reinforce what you just said, Noah, that the finance committee, we talked about the value of having a biennial budget. So some of these risks can be mitigated just because of the, our ability to come back to the table and see additional data as we proceed down this two-year timetable.
And then I think this table helps illustrate the discussion that we had at the finance committee as this looks at 2015 and the actual growth that we've received. From then through 2019. Again, where we landed with our 2021 sales tax revenue projection is less than 2019. But is about 150,000 from where we started when we started the budget process. And again, when we look at this and compare the first three quarters of 2019, it's the first three quarters of 2020, we are showing a growth rate of 6.16%. Which which is amazing with what has gone on this year. That's real, that's real growth. It's also real growth in particular sectors of our economy, which I think isn't a surprise with many projects being done. Construction jobs and retail sales tax for furniture machines and remodeling homes. A lot of that sales tax revenue has come into play and it's created a nice, strong year for us in 2020. For the 2020, 21 biennial budget, we are budgeting a total growth rate in sales tax revenue of 4.24%. Again, many of the economic commentary that we hear is about a slowdown. Anticipated coming 21, also with higher probabilities of recession risk and multiple levels of concern for COVID. So we have, we are approaching this revenue sales tax the much same way we have in prior years. That we are budgeting for the upside potential with limiting our downside risk. Recognizing that people absorb information differently, we just like to display the sales tax history on the graph. For those that are visual learners, it just showcases the barge. Again, sales tax growth has been solid and reflects the variance in the years. And that concludes my remarks for this evening. Yeah, we intend to hold the public hearing on the property tax levy on October 17th. For adoption, if the council does have any questions or would like me to cover something further at that meeting, please feel free to send me an email. Let me know. And I'd be happy to do so.
And what did you mean to say October 20th?
Yeah, what did I say?
17.
Oh, yeah, October 27th.
27th or 20th?
27th, we will hold the public hearing for the property tax levy.
Okay.
In two weeks, yeah. Next week, we will have the public hearing on the preliminary budget. And we'll have a study session and discuss the whole preliminary budget, including revenues and expenditures. And then we'll follow up on the 27th and adopt the property tax levy.
Okay. Noah, on your sheet a little earlier, you indicated that the hearing will be on the 27th and a special meeting on the 28th. Was that?
Oh, no, no, no. A good catch. That's not what I intend. So on the calendar, this is what you're referring to.
Oh, that's the all-day meeting for a department. I'm sorry.
Yeah, so we, our plan was to confirm this with the full council members that the 28th would work for the all-day special council meeting where we would look at each department's budget. We had some dates picked out with the finance committee. Just wanted to throw that idea to the rest of the council, see if that would work for them as well. So that's just a placeholder. And again, we can tackle that next week after the preliminary budget discussion.
Thank you.
And nothing further from me, Mayor.
All right, we're just putting that budget meeting, holding that time in my calendar. So if others could do that too. On the October 28th, it'll various, probably this format and bringing various department directors in. To talk about their budgets, so.
When will we know that that's the date?
Unless somebody says. Unless somebody says it doesn't work. I think that's where we're headed.
So we're kind of looking for input tonight from folks to make sure that the 28th will work.
You've currently got a manager's meeting scheduled for that day at nine.
And I think I could, I think we could reschedule that if we needed that time. Or we could go a little earlier ahead of the council. There's six budgets, so probably an hour a piece. Just like a typical Super Tuesday.
So I'm not hearing anybody object to the 28th. So.
Okay, so tentatively, we'll we'll work out a schedule and which departments and you're welcome to come to all of it or the pieces that that interest you. So.
All right.
When that date is final, so I can send a notice for a quorum notice.
Yes.
Well, it sounds like to me that that's the final date. So.
Sounds like you're sending a quorum notice and we just got to work out the times.
Yeah, you just work out the agenda for that date, but council, we need to plan on it for those of you that are interested and available to 28. Thank you.
Perfect. That was never been easier. The Zoom thing is working. All right, we're to our next item, which is a is a public hearing, adoption of an ordinance proposing revisions to the Port Orchard municipal code. Chapters 3.48 multifamily property tax exemption. Mr. Bond.
Yes, thank you. And item 6A also corresponds to item 7A in your packet. So I'll do the staff report for both items. In in 2016, we adopted a multifamily tax exemption ordinance for the city of Port Orchard. And in that ordinance, we offered a 12 year and an eight year tax exemption for the construction of of multifamily housing. The 12 year exemption required that the housing be affordable. After a little over four years since that was adopted, we have granted the exemption on one project that is now operating and providing affordable units. And a second project is currently under construction that has qualified for the multifamily tax exemption. What we've learned through these two projects is that the due to the median income for Kitsap County, what constitutes an affordable housing unit based on the median income for Kitsap County is not that different from a market rate unit in Port Orchard. And the other thing that we've learned is that the eight year exemption really doesn't isn't getting the city's significant benefits in the way that we would like to see in terms of redevelopment, but also seeing a type of development that is consistent with our our long range plans. So we've worked with the land use committee on this and have come up with a proposal that creates three different types of tax exemption with three corresponding maps. The first type of exemption is a type one and provides the 12 year exemption and is available in designated centers and has a higher bar for housing affordability in order to receive that tax benefit. Type two, the type two exemption is really targeting specific properties for redevelopment where we have either an underutilized site or a a site that that just needs some attention or updating. So if you can incorporate affordable housing into a project or I'm sorry, if you can just update that project, we are offering the eight year exemption if you construct multifamily housing. So an example of this would be like the South Kitsap Mall site where that is is in need of some redevelopment and a refresh. And if housing was incorporated into the redesign of that site, they would qualify for a a tax exemption on the multifamily portion of the project. Type three is the the third type that we're offering is also an eight year exemption. But this is really targeting greenfield development within centers. And it seeks to provide the tax benefit when you construct building types that correspond to our our plans, for instance, in downtown or the Ruby Creek area. If you're providing the mixed use type buildings that either contain a percentage of the ground floor as commercial with multifamily housing. Or if you provide a parking garage type structure as part of your project, you can qualify for this type of exemption. So this proposal was reviewed in detail at the September work study meeting. Our the city attorney did point out that a public hearing was required before we could adopt this. And so that's why it was removed from the last meeting agenda of September and moved into October so that we had time to adequately notice the hearing. And the staff recommendation tonight is to to hold a public hearing. And then under item 7A, the recommendation is to approve the the proposed ordinance. There's any questions? I'm happy to take those.
With that, I will open the public hearing related to the proposed revisions to Port Orchard Port Orchard Municipal Code, chapters 3.48 multifamily property tax exemption. And seeing no members of the public present, I will close the public hearing on the multifamily property tax exemption. With that, we will go to our business items. The first is business item A, which is the multifamily property tax exemption that we just had a public hearing for. Mr. Bond, this is yours.
All right. So the I'm not going to re-present the staff report, but the staff recommendation on the ordinance is to approve the ordinance as presented.
Is there a motion? Councilmember Deener?
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve an ordinance adopting revisions to Port Orchard Municipal Code, Chapter 3.48.
Second.
A motion by Councilmember Deener and a second by Councilmember Ashby. Are there any questions for Mr. Bond on this matter? I know we've had it at a work study, but we might have further questions. I'm not hearing any. I think these are good changes that make this property tax exemption more meaningful and also could promote some of the types of development there wish what we're wishing to see in our in our city in locations that are prime for that. So with that, you'll be voting on the vision revising chapters 3.48 multifamily property tax exemption. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Is there anyone opposed? During none, the motion passes. On item B, which is adoption of an ordinance adopting amendments to Port Orchard Municipal Code 20.26 Development Agreements. Mr. Bond.
Thank you. Chapter 20.26 of the municipal code currently contains standards and procedures governing the the city's use of development agreements, which can be entered into between the city and applicants to provide flexibility in the application of development standards. The city council, the city attorney and DCD staff have identified a number of proposed amendments to the existing code to clarify the standards that may be addressed in a development agreement to provide more specificity on the application and processing requirements and the the decision type and to strengthen requirements for additional public benefit for development agreement extensions. These revisions have been incorporated into an ordinance for review and adoption. The planning commission held a public hearing on the proposed amendments to 20.26 on October 6, 2020 and voted recommended that that the city council approve an ordinance adopting the amendments. The land use committee also reviewed the amendments on October 7, 2020 and directed staff to bring the ordinance to the full council for review and adoption at tonight's meeting. The staff recommendation is to approve the ordinance adopting amendments to chapter 20.26. And as some of you may not have had a chance to review this yet, I'm happy to answer any questions about the specific changes in the the ordinance.
Questions or Mr. Deener?
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt an ordinance adopting amendments to chapter 20.26 for our municipal code.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Councilmember Deener and a second by Councilmember Ashby. I could see your lips moving, Councilmember Luccarelli, but I wasn't hearing you. Mute button. So. Questions? Councilmember Ashby?
Yes, I I would appreciate it. Mr. Bond, if you would review the changes you've made. Because again, this didn't go to a work study. It it went straight from land use to a meeting.
All right. So I'll go through this and reference the page numbers in your packet. So the ordinance is presented in strike through and underline. And the first change is to the table in 20.22, which is on page 105 of your packet. Actually, 106 of your packet, it it spans multiple pages. And what we've done here is we have added a footnote. And depending on whether a development agreement is consolidated with either a type three permit such as a subdivision or some other type of permit, it it could be a type one, two, three, four or five permit. And and the appeal processes vary with each permit type. In some cases, it goes straight to Superior Court. In other cases, it it or in some cases, it's a lupa appeal. And in other cases, it it is a legislative type appeal. In addition, we've retitled the chapter. Previously, it was a it said permitting and development approval, development agreements, but it's the word permitting was removed from the title. We, one of the the big changes is previously our our code did not say which elements could be changed by by a development agreement. And so some of the references in the purpose and authority as well as in section 20.26020 on on page 108. It actually lists the chapters that can be where deviations can be provided via development agreement. And you'll see that some things are included such as design guidelines, but other things like stormwater, which courts have said you cannot you cannot extend vesting or or deviate from those minimum standards are not included. So so we've given a a complete list of those things which can be addressed via a development agreement. Also on page 107 and 108. It talks about what development standards are and what they are not. So moving on through the agreement to page 109. It it gives further clarification after it lists the code sections that can be changed via development agreement. It it clarifies under what circumstances those changes can take place. And it also it it further elaborates on the the table of permit types in this section two decision type. Where it talks about if a development agreement is consolidated with another permit, it it gets processed according to that that permit type and would be appealed differently in in some circumstances. We added a provision on page 110 that clarified that the full cost of drafting and processing the development agreement shall be reimbursed by the the owner or the applicant prior to find city council approval. Previously, we had addressed this in our our city fee resolution, a resolution saying that a deposit was required for the development agreement, but we needed to make sure that there was authority for charging the the full cost of the development agreement in this chapter. Another big change, and I mentioned this in the staff report, but previously you could terminate or modify a development agreement, but we didn't have very clear procedures for how to extend an agreement. And a couple of the parties that we've been negotiating agreements with recently have expressed concern about the term of our agreement and we really didn't feel comfortable offering a term that is longer than 20 years and even 20 years is a pretty long time. But we didn't want to preclude ourselves from granting an extension, provided that the city received an additional benefit for that extension. So we have explicitly created provisions so that the city council at its discretion can extend a development agreement in the future. And one of the questions the planning commission had, we're proposing 10 year extensions and then you can get two of those. This may be an issue with the county courthouse project because they are proposing a phased project over 20 to 30 years. And so we're not quite sure what their timeline is going to be. We don't want to grant them more than 20 years initially, but I think that the council should retain the flexibility to to consider an extension beyond that in the future. The planning commission had suggested that we go to a five year extension, but considering the amount of work it is to to renegotiate some of these development agreements and we've been working on agreements with various parties, it's it takes enough time and resources from the city that that a five year extension is not worth the the effort that it takes to to get these things processed. I think that it's better just to have a 10 year extension and then not not have to touch it so soon after you you just got done doing that work. Moving on in the packet to page 111, we've clarified the application requirements for requesting a development agreement. We, because there are noticing requirements, we've asked that applicants provide mailing lists and envelopes and stamped envelopes related to sending out notices for the development agreement. And we've also and also a map that shows the properties that that need to receive notice. Finally, under appeals, I I mentioned this earlier, but a type three decision like a subdivision will initially go to the hearing examiner. And the hearing examiner conducts a public hearing on the subdivision. So if someone consolidates a development agreement with a subdivision, we are proposing that the hearing examiner be the person that hold the hearing on both the development agreement and the subdivision as a combined proposal. And then the hearing examiner provide a recommendation to the city council for final action on the development agreement. In other cases, our code previously indicated that the planning commission actually would hold hearings on the proposed development agreement if it was a legislative action. And because these agreements deal with issues that aren't necessarily related to land use, such as if if we're negotiating financial considerations. We felt like the planning commission was being inserted into situations that were potentially beyond their sort of their their mandate. And so we felt that it would be better to ensure that for development agreements only, the hearing would be held by the city council, except when it's a type three permit that goes to the hearing examiner. And along those same lines, the I mentioned the appeal process being different if if a development agreement is proposed as a standalone agreement without an underlying permit or without a permit application filed at the same time, the appeal process is different than if it's consolidated with a permit and would have a lupa appeal and the Land Use Petition Act of Washington sets out the parameters for how you appeal a permit. But development agreements, when they're all by themselves, are not considered a permit. They're considered a legislative action. And so in some cases, when it's consolidated with the permit, it's going to, it has a 21 day timeline for filing the appeal and has a very prescriptive process for how that appeal goes. If it's a legislative action, I think the county, Charlie, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think the council has quite a bit more discretion and also the appeal period is not does not have the same constraints as a lupa type action in terms of timing. Is that is that correct?
Correct. Yes.
So so the the ordinance is just being amended to sort of recognize that there are different paths that can be followed with regard to proposing, amending and approving development agreements. Finally, the end of the chapter on page 114. It does clarify that development agreements are discretionary. And so just because somebody proposes a development agreement, council is not obligated to approve that, whether it's an extension, an amendment or a new a new agreement. And it also clarifies that unauthorized fees are prohibited. And some of the the older things that we've inherited from the county have, I think we've all seen feet, some arrangements that sort of make you scratch your head. And so this is clarifying that that those types of arrangements are not permitted unless there's unless they're authorized by state law or or some other provision of law. So I I went through that kind of fast, but if you have specific questions, please let Charlie or I know. I may defer to her if you have something that is beyond my legal expertise.
Councilmember Ashby, did we answer your all your questions related to that?
Yes, I had read it, but I wasn't sure exactly. I wanted the clarification. I appreciate that, Nick. I also appreciate the work your department has done on this and the preceding action we took on the multifamily tax exemption. That that particular body of work was important after we had had a couple of projects go through and we saw what worked and what could be improved. So anyway, I really do appreciate what your department's been doing for us. Thank you. I want to extend since I since I have the floor to compliment Noah and his department on the information they provided us on the budget. The finance committee has received a little more than the full council has and I. and I have found it very helpful and easy to understand. So I appreciate that a great deal. Thank you, Noah.
Councilor Chang, you raised your hand.
Yeah, Noah, you mentioned the, the terms of the 10 year extensions. And I was actually intrigued by the previous page where you're saying that the, and I don't mean you personally, but of the development agreement would be limited to 20 years. Um, what in your memory, at the top of your head, would you say is the average term of a developer agreement is 20 years on the long side or short side?
I think it's probably on the long side across the realm of development agreements in all jurisdictions. We have inherited some unusually long development agreements. One of them, the McCormick Agreement for Transportation actually doesn't expire until 15 years after the final of 10 projects is constructed. And that agreement is already almost 20 years old and we're probably 60 years from the current agreement expiring. So, but it really depends on when certain projects are actually constructed. I, we have quite a few that have a 20 year term. And we've had a few development agreements that actually didn't specify a term, which is also problematic. So that, that's why it's important to have a limit in our code so that nothing in the future get approved, gets approved that will be, a, will be hiding in wait for, for my successor someday to cause them all sorts of problems.
Thank you.
Councilmember Deener, did you raise your hand?
Yeah, so I also wanted to thank staff for the work that they've done on this. And at the land use committee, I brought up the idea that, that a 20 year plus two 10s seemed like an awful long time. It was pointed out that even those extensions are discretionary in nature. But my observation is that once you have the opportunity for two 10 years, it's kind of hard to walk it back if you've already given one of those. But that's really something for us to think about. And then I have a question on page one fourteen under two or twenty, twenty six oh six oh. Should we modify the language so that it reads the decision of the city council to approve or reject a request for a development agreement, including any subsequent extensions, shall be a discretionary legislative act? And so on.
I, I don't see an issue with that, although if you're going to talk about extension, you should, extensions, you should also talk about amendments. So the decision of the city council to approve or reject a request for a development agreement, including an amendment or extension, shall be discretionary. Something, something like that. I think Charlie and I could, could clarify that if you wanted to make it an amendment.
Yes, could we make that an amendment, please? Would you like me to read that into the record?
Yeah, please, please do.
The decision, the amendment would, would read revise twenty point two six oh six oh to read the decision of the city council to approve or reject a request for a development agreement, including any subsequent amendments or extensions, shall be a discretionary legislative act and an exercise of the city's police power and contract authority.
Perfect.
I have a, I have a motion. Do I have a second for that amendment? Okay, I heard a second by councilmember Clausen. Then the amendment was by councilmember Deener. Brandy, do you catch, capture that?
I did.
Okay, discussion of that amendment. Councilmember Clausen, did you raise your hand?
No, I have another question, but not on the amendment. Thank you.
Okay, but not on the amendment. All right. So we'll be voting on the amendment if there's no further questions. All in, on favor of the amendment by councilmember Deener, please say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? The amendment is approved. Councilmember Clausen, do you have a further question on the main motion?
Yeah, I do. In the award of extensions, is it 10 years or not at all? Or does it count by discretion to, for whatever reason, go with something different than 10 years?
10 years is the, the cap. So the council has absolute discretion to set an extension at whatever length of time it feels comfortable with. But 10 years, I believe, would be the cap in increments of two.
And, and does that include the initial DA term as well? Could award a 15 year DA instead of a 20 year?
Correct. Yes.
So the only thing with those extensions, as Nick pointed out, it's taking years to negotiate because we want benefit for those extensions. And then all of a sudden you do, you spend three year, four years develop, negotiating something. And for a five year extension, and it just takes a lot of our legal time and our staff time to, but you know, we'll cross that bridge when we get there.
Yeah, there's always that issue of, you know, progress being shown or something of that nature that might come into the discussion.
Yep. Other questions? Comments about the main motion? All right, councilmember Deener?
Well, I just wanted to, to hear if anybody else had any discussions about the, the length of two 10 year extensions possibility. Or was that a question for anybody else?
Well, I was uncomfortable with the 20 year. So the, the tenure also seemed a little excessive. I can under, I, I am hearing what Nick's saying about after all the negotiations, five year may seem too frequent. But, um, and I don't know if there's another way to word it. It just, I think if you looked at it, you would expect a 10, a 10 year extension.
Clearly says up to a length, or I'm sorry, for no more than a length of 10 years. So I think it implies it could be two years or five years or seven years or 10 years.
That's why I wanted a clarification on it was to know that the councils have that flexibility.
And I like the 10 year term. I mean, these things are massive in nature. And think back what happened with the last recession back in 2008, 2009. And you lose six, seven years worth of developments and all of a sudden the developer gets going again. And there's only three years left on their clock. I mean, it just, it's not offensive to me at all.
Sean, you said you liked the, the 10 year term. Do you like the two 10 year terms?
I, I do because I think there could be, you know, I think McCormick's a great example. It's such a massive, it's one of the largest, you know, master plant communities in the entire state of Washington. Right? And so it might not be realistic for something like that, that, that size and scope to, to be done in 10 years or even, even 20 years. And so again, by, by having the discretion of the council, are we going to work through this and talk through it? I like that there's a tool here, but it doesn't mean we have to exercise the tool.
And I think in reality, the next big development agreement we're going to negotiate is the county campus. And there's likely to be a cycle, hopefully not two in, in that time period. And it's going to be based on real estate excise taxes, how they're going to pay for this thing. And I want it done as fast as possible, but we don't want to have it partway done. And then all of a sudden, the regulations change on them because their, their, their development agreement is change, expired. Further discussion, I, I didn't hear a motion out of councilmember Deener, but there was discussion about, about that, those two 10 years extensions.
No, I can, I can count the vote.
Okay, all right. So we're back on this main motion, further discussion on the main motion. All right, hearing none, you'll be voting on amendments to the Port Orchard Municipal Code, chapter twenty point two six, related to, to development agreements. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Is there anyone opposed? Hearing none, the motion is approved. We're to item C, adoption of a resolution approving a contract with the South Kitzap School District for COVID-19 relief. Ms. Archer, this is yours.
Thank you, Mayor, councilmembers. The Washington State Department of Commerce allocated funding to the city of Port Orchard in a total amount of $647,000. The mayor has done his darndest to find ways to utilize those funds and allow them to reach members of the public. One of those methods is to provide grant funding to the school district, the South Kitzap School District, to reach residents of Port Orchard and to allow them to purchase protective equipment and to purchase technology necessary to facilitate distance learning, including Wi-Fi hotspots. By this resolution, the council would authorize funding to the South Kitzap School District from your allocated CARES funding in the total amount of $10,000. I think there's an extra zero on the staff report, apologies, for the purchase of that protective equipment, Wi-Fi hotspots and related technology, allowing the school to continue to operate remotely in accordance with the state mandate, state and federal mandated restrictions. And I'm happy to stand for any questions related to the resolution, the grants or the contract.
Questions or a motion? Councilmember Lucarelli?
I move to adopt a resolution declaring a public purpose, authorizing a grant award to the South Kitzap School District for COVID-19 relief and authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with the district in a form acceptable to the city attorney.
Second.
A motion by councilmember Lucarelli and a second by councilmember Clausen. Any questions for myself or Ms. Archer? So as you can see, we're, we're providing primarily hotspots with this chunk of money to our school district. I know some of the nonprofits have been helping out with, with this type of funding too for the school district. There's a big need out there for people that don't have good internet for these Wi-Fi hotspots. With that, you'll be voting on a resolution approving a contract with South Kitzap School District, District for COVID-19 relief. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Is there anyone opposed? Hearing none, the resolution is approved. All right, we're on to item D, adoption of a resolution approving an amendment to contract number zero six zero dash two zero with Department of Commerce related to the COVID-19 CARES Act funds. Mr. Crocker, this is yours.
Thank you, Mayor. As the council is familiar with, the CARES Act was enacted in March 27th, 2020 to provide immediate relief in response to COVID-19. By resolution number zero two seven dash 20, the city council authorized the mayor to execute an interagency agreement with Department of Commerce to be eligible for up to $431,700 CARES Act funding. On August 31st, 2020, Governor Inslee announced an additional allocation of funds for Washington local governments. The city of Port Orchard is eligible for an additional $215,850 of CARES Act funding and an additional time to request reimbursement. So costs incurred due to the public health emergency with respect to COVID during the period of March 1st, 2020 through November 30th of 2020 are eligible for reimbursement from the CARES Act funding. As a result of both the allocations and the additional time, the city portrait is eligible for up to $647,550 of CARES Act funding administered through Department of Commerce. And in order to pursue the additional funds, the city must execute an agreement, an amendment to the interagency agreement with Department of Commerce, again, in the form that required by Department of Commerce. Staff would recommend the city council approve the resolution authorizing the mayor to execute the amendment to the interagency agreement with Department of Commerce related, related to the CARES Act funding. And I'm happy to take any questions.
All right, councilmember Deener?
I move to adopt a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into the amendment to the interagency agreement with the Department of Commerce related to the COVID-19 CARES Act funds for local governments in Washington State.
Second.
We have a motion by councilmember Deener, a second by councilmember Kachardi for the agreement with Commerce to accept the additional funds. And also it gives us an additional 30 days of time to seek reimbursement for our, on our funding. Any questions for me or for Mr. Crocker? Councilmember Lucarelli?
Not a question, but a tiny little Scribner's error in the fourth paragraph, third line, add to combat. In order to combat COVID-19. That's all. Tiny.
Your comments or questions? All right, you'd be voting on adoption of a resolution approving an amendment to the contract number six zero dash two zero with the Department of Commerce related to COVID-19 CARES Act funds. All in favor, please state aye.
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 Is there anyone opposed? Hearing none, the resolution is approved. We're to item E on our agenda, adoption of a resolution amending resolution number zero two nine dash two zero to increase the total amount of available grant funding to and to approve an amendment to contract number zero six three dash two zero with Kitzap Economic Development Alliance for Administration of the Port Orchard CARES Small Business Relief Grant Program. Crocker?
Thank you, Mayor. Once again, this resolution is amending our current contract with Kitzap Economic Development Alliance to broaden and enlarge the small business grant relief grant program. The mayor has done a really hard, worked really hard to deploy the CARES Act's funding to our community. And as such is successful working with Kita to expand that program. Staff would recommend that we amend this resolution number oh nine oh two nine 20 to increase the grant funding for the Port Orchard CARES Small Business Relief Grant Program and to authorize an amendment to the agreement with Kita for the program administration costs.
I move to adopt a resolution amending the Port Orchard CARES Small Business Relief Grant Program to increase the total amount of available grant funding, authorizing the mayor to implement the program as amended and authorizing the mayor to execute and amend a contract with the Kitzap Economic Development Alliance for the administration of the program.
Go ahead, second. Okay, I have a motion by councilmember Kachardi, a second by councilmember Ashby. And this is, we've kind of waited till after the fact, those applications are in. And that third phase was our most successful and totaling nearly $50,000. So we're just shy of $150,000, 147, 542, and almost 35 applications. So I'm very, very proud of the work that's gone into this, this last round of applications. After you approve it, Kita still has some work to do. And I'm hopeful the last week of the month that I'm out delivering checks for this, this round of funding. Finance Department, our finance department and Kita are both ready to be done with CARES. And it's been very, very labor intensive. There's a lot of documents that go with all this. And Kita, right now, you know, they wanted to help, but a hundred dollars in application was a bargain for all the paperwork going into this. And they're, they're administering four programs right now, and ours is the smallest of the four. The county's got a program, Bremerton has a program, and they're also administering a program for Commerce. So there's a lot of different grants out there right now. Pauls Bow, I don't know how they did it, but they're, they're administering their grants in-house and didn't partner with Kita. So I'm very thankful for the partnership with Kita because they've done a tremendous amount of work. I, I don't believe we could have done this on our own. This, this, the work we've done on our side is tremendous. And I appreciate the, the help by our attorney, Ms. Archer, and Noah and his staff as, as we have deployed these dollars in our community. So with that, any questions or comments related to this program? Councilmember Chang?
I want to thank you, Mayor and staff, for going out for the third round. I understand from some business owners that they, they were hesitant to apply in the first place. And I also, also hearing some of them, they just felt that, they felt uncomfortable applying for this money. So I think that with, with the extended deadlines, this, this really encouraged them to get the support that they need.
And I concur with your comment. When, those that were comfortable, I've been very public about sharing stories and pictures and other business members in our community, when I deliver the check, they're a bit sheepish about it. They don't want anybody to know that, that they're in need. But many, our businesses are in need. And I know I, I had a couple of business owners get teary eyed when, and when I, when I handed them a check and, and they were very thankful, appreciative and wanted to tell me and I want to pass on to you how much this means to them in their time of need. Other comments? Thank you, councilmember Chang, for, for your question and comment. All right, with that, we'll be voting on the resolution amending and increasing the total amount of grant funding available to, and increasing the total amount of grant funding available to, with our contract with Kitsap Development Alliance for our CARES Grant Relief Program. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Is there anyone opposed? The amendment to the resolution has been approved. We are to item F, adoption of a resolution approving a contract with Rice Fergus Miller for the 2020-2021 Schematic Design 30% City Hall Improvement Project. Mr. Dorsey.
Thank you, your honor, council members. You can all hear me?
Yes.
On January 31 and February 7, 2020, the city's Public Works Department published a request for qualifications or an RFQ for the 2020-2021 Ad Ready 100% PSC City Hall Improvement Project, which included the schematic 30% and design development 60% phases. By the February 28, 2020 deadline, five statement qualifications were received. On March 10, 2020, upon completion of the mandatory bidder's responsibility checklist and scoring ranking of the five statement qualifications received, city staff selected the top three qualified firms for interview. On July 22 and July 23, after a COVID-19 related hiatus, city staff interviewed, scored and then selected Rice Fergus Miller for the project. Public Works staff then met with Rice Fergus Miller to discuss, clarify and develop the project understanding. And on September 18, 2020, the city received a defined scope of work budget and project timeline for the schematic only design phase of the project in an amount not to exceed $104,000 plus a reimbursable expense that's estimated at $25,000. Staff recommends adoption of resolution 041-20, thereby approving contract number C075-20 with Rice Fergus Miller for the 2020-2021 Schematic City Hall Improvement Project in the amount of $106,500 and documenting the professional services procedures. And I'd like to note, as we move from the 30 to the 60 or to the 100, we will not be required to go back out and advertise, we'll be able to work with Rice Fergus Miller because the original advertisement was for the 100%.
If you remember, go ahead, Councilmore Claussen.
I was just going to make a motion, Mayor. If it's, Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt Resolution Number 041-20, thereby approving contract number C075-20 with Rice Fergus Miller Incorporated for the 2020-2021 Schematic 30% City Hall Improvement Project in an amount of $106,500 and documenting the professional services procurement procedure.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Claussen, second by Councilmember Lucarelli. If you recall, about four years ago, we did a space and needs analysis in City Hall, also done by Rice Fergus Miller. And we were on a path to potentially add about a third more space onto City Hall as well as address our weatherization needs. And now COVID's come along and, you know, the workplace is different. And we might, it's likely we won't need this additional space for, for some time. And also the community centers in play and what that could mean for space and uses too. So while we wait on the additional space, we can't wait on the weatherization of the building. I was reminded of that today as I sat in my office this afternoon with the wind blowing and the window coverings moving back and forth. When the windows are closed, they're not supposed to do that. So the clock tower, I'm sure the sump pump in the clock tower has been working overtime today. And, you know, our roof can't, shouldn't leak, our windows shouldn't leak. And there's, you know, our siding's in not very good shape. So, you know, we're going to address those needs. We have some electrical needs and related to our generator isn't properly sized for the building. And we have them looking at the possibility of adding solar panels to the building too. So this gets just 30% by the end of the year. And then the budget, the Finance Committee seen and the rest of you will see soon as I think it's roughly $250,000 to finish that 100% ad-ready design and specs so that it's ready sometime in 2021 for then us to have an idea what that's going to cost, develop a financing plan and then potentially put that out to bid. So that's kind of where we're at with this, where we were and where we're at today. So questions for me on this, Councilmember Claussen?
Just a comment, when Mark read the staff report, he indicated that the plus reimbursable expense estimated that he said 25,000, but the staff report's just 2,500. So just to clarify that.
So which is it, Mark?
It's 2,500. Did I say 25,000?
Yes.
You did, but the total amount that we approved is more in line with the 2,500. So.
Good catch. Awesome. All right, Councilmember Lucarelli?
That was the same thing I was going to say. Thank you.
Same thing, all right. That's why Mark is an engineer and not the finance director.
Well, I'm also wearing glasses that DJ gave me that she got from Walgreens. So.
A few years ago.
A long time ago, yeah. I lost my real glasses, so my apologies.
All right. Other comments or questions? All right, with that, you'll be voting on the adoption of a resolution approving a contract with Rice Fergus Miller for the schematic design at 30% for City Hall Improvement Project. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Is there anyone opposed? Hearing none, so the resolution is approved. And so we are to our last business item, which is item G, which are the council meeting minutes. Looks like we could have put these on the consent agenda because our person that was absent is absent this evening. So, so a motion to approve the minutes from September 22.
Mr. Mayor.
We approve the minutes as published.
Sir, second. All right, I have a motion by Councilmember Claussen and a second by Councilmember Deener to approve the meeting minutes of September 22. The further discussion of those meeting minutes? Hearing none, all in favor of approving the minutes, please state aye.
Aye.
Is there anyone opposed? I don't believe there are any abstentions either, so minutes are approved. All right, discussion items, biennial budget. I think we tackled the meeting schedule on the 26th, I think it was, or 28th?
28.
28. Is there anything else you want to add for the discussion item, Noah?
No, I think we covered everything for this meeting. Yep.
Perfect, thank you. Council Committee reports, Finance Committee. You met, discussed the budget here recently. I'm not sure if we've had a council meeting since then.
No, that's just basically the committee did meet, I think it was on the 5th, if I remember correctly, and pretty much devoted the entire meeting to the information that Noah shared as well as, you know, this quick outline of the budget and some of the areas that we'll all be discussing here soon. So that's pretty much the report for the Finance Committee.
Okay. And economic development has been rescheduled now. It looks like it's on October 26 at 8:00 a.m. And Utility Committee, you're meeting on October 20th, that's next week. So I doubt that you have a report, correct?
Our previous, after our previous meeting, we, the most important thing was the sewer CFCs, which we tackled already.
Perfect. And Sewer Advisory Committee, do you have a meeting date yet or not?
Yes, November 18, 6:30 p.m.
Perfect. Land use, is there a report from you?
Yes, we met on October 7 at 4:30. We were, we were fully, well, I guess Councilmember Chang was absent. But we had a, an update on the Parks Rec Open Space Plan Survey, survey results. The analysis of those results wasn't yet conducted or presented, but we did review or had the opportunity to review lots of data that was collected. We also reviewed the Development Agreement Ordinance that was presented tonight. We also discussed some Title 20 housekeeping ordinance changes. Those are the kinds of changes that you realize after you've been running with a title for a while. You realizes, realize that there are certain things that need to be corrected or changed. So we'll see that soon. We also had a preview of some potential 2021 Conference of Plan Amendments. And I won't go into a lot of detail on those, but just know that they're coming. And then we also had a preview of, but didn't really talk about the initial draft of the downtown and county campus subarea plan prospects. So that's what the meeting was about. Any questions?
Hearing none, thank you for your report, Councilmember Chang.
I just wanted to mention that the next meeting is actually at 4:30 instead of 9:30 is listed in the agenda. And I apologize for missing the other one. I didn't show up in my calendar since the last iOS update. So I was fixing that today, so I have all entries back in my calendar.
Love technology. All right, Transportation Committee, I see you're going to meet on the 27th of this month here, two weeks from tonight. And Lodging Tax, Clerk Reinderson, do you have anything to report since Councilmember Rose Pepe is not here tonight?
Um, staff did open up the application process for lodging tax participants who want to seek reimbursement through lodging tax funds with the council. At the, at the direction of the council, we are opening it up only to tourism marketing at this time. And then after the new year, you guys will look at the revenue that came in to determine if we're going to open it up to the tourism festivals and events. So I have received two applications so far that closes tomorrow at 4:00 p.m. The committee should be meeting next week or the week of the 26th to get together to hear the presentation from the applicants as well as deliberate and provide a recommendation to the council. So hopefully either the 27th or the first meeting in November, you should have a recommendation before you from the Lodging Tax Committee.
Okay, thank you for the update. Festival of Chimes and Lights, Cindy?
Yes, so what we have done is prepared a utilities billing insert to clarify what the event will be this year and what it won't be. And most of any, anything that has to do with public gatherings will not be happening. So we're going to have the tree, the tree decorating contest, lots of light displays. And now we're going to actually be having a 5K virtual run. But most of our activities will be postponed until next year. So our next meeting is in a week.
We're just having a different Christmas.
Yes. Lots of lights.
Lots of lights, though, that's right. So on outside agencies, I've got a couple and I'm sure Councilmember Ashby's got one too. So Transit Board meeting last week, I know we got a presentation a couple of months ago about their preferred alternatives related to the park and ride lot that Transit has been studying. And the top two alternatives were our dump site in the industrial park and the other one was the, within our Ruby Creek subarea. And the Transit Board voted on Tuesday, last Tuesday, to accept the consultant's recommendation for the route to, is our preferred alternative is the Ruby Creek site. And Transit will continue to, to evaluate that, to do further analysis to determine that is the, the correct site to build that 240, 250 car park and ride lot within that Ruby Creek subarea. So I just wanted to share that with you. Also today for Transit, I participated in the State Auditor's Entrance Conference. And I had participated in the Gorsuch Coalition Meeting today. They are looking to hire a dedicated lobbyist for up to $10,000 a month. Considering we pay our lobbyist $3,800, that I had the same reaction you guys did. I saw a lot of eyebrows go up and they were looking for people to write checks today, matter of fact, almost. And I offered the assistance of our lobbyist. And as some of us did, asked for maybe a work plan and a budget to be developed. And maybe the, I think it's more realistic that the private sector fund lobbyist if one is needed for this and that the government, us, the county and Bremerton have lobbyists and maybe we contribute our lobbyists. But you're, you're the council and you control the budget. So I will bring the request back to you when I get the formal request. But just sharing what I, what I learned today. And see here, KRCC, I know there's been requests for some questions for you guys to review some questions that will be asked of our delegation at the reception on November 12. And I don't think we've seen any responses yet. So if you've got questions you'd like to see asked, I know we'd love to hear from you. So with that, those are my reports. Councilmember Ashby, do you have anything? And then I see Councilmember Claussen.
What I would add is, or what I was going to mention is the legislative reception will be via Zoom this year and it is November 12. Other thing, the Peninsula RPTO has put together and will be finalizing this Friday a outline of educational and informational pieces to our legislative delegations. And so the RPTO has scheduled meetings with the 24th Legislative District on October 28. We will be working with the 23rd and 26th on, I believe it's November 5. And we will be meeting with the 35th also on November 5. So all of our groups right now are busy educating our legislators for the upcoming session and letting them know what things are of particular concern and importance to us.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Ashby. Councilmember Claussen, I saw you raise your hand.
Yes, I just wanted to add to your comments on the Gorsuch Coalition. I think the group is developing a proposed budget, which I think will give us better data and information on exactly what their expenditures are anticipated to be. And also that whomever is selected and hired would be responsible for not only informing and advocating for this project with state, but it's going to be federal delegations as well. I would also share that Congressman Kilmer was on the call and shared some activities that are going on in Washington DC regarding allocation of funding. Now, as we all know, there's lots of negotiations that are underway back in DC. And with the upcoming election, who knows what's going to happen. His prediction was that right after the first of the year, he believes that there's going to be a infrastructure package approved back in DC to help with, I guess, stirring the economy and getting the economy back rolling again. And he sees that a fair amount of effort is going to be devoted towards highway and bridge improvements and things of that nature. So I think there's lots of things that are going on with this Gorsuch project. It's expensive. I think the estimated amount right now, if I'm not mistaken, mayor is what about $425 million is what's being envisioned for a solution there. And the only other thing I would add is this is the first time that I've seen the Navy actively involved in solving a transportation issue outside of their gates. So I think that there's a lot of, there's a lot more to this effort right now than some of the rhetoric that's been going on with past efforts. So I look you through my rose colored glasses. I, I'm hopeful that we will come up with some kind of a, a solution to this problem that we can actually move forward with. So I'll stop there.
All right, thanks for adding on. We'll go to the mayor's report. I, we've got a survey for the community center out to our community. We're in the second week and it closes on Friday. Please take it and ask. Please take it and ask others to take it. It, we're asking our community what type of uses and amenities they want to see in, in the community center. And so far, we've seen 500 responses already, which I think is, is really good. And, but I see, I'd like to see 500 more by the end of the week if we could. So if you haven't taken the survey, please do and encourage others to do so. The chief talked to me yesterday about a practice that we had related to police vacation requests, meaning that people call the police department and say, hey, I'm going on vacation or I'm headed to Arizona for the next three months. And I want you to come by and, and take a look at our, you know, check on our house. And based on our staffing levels, that's just really not realistic. And secondly, our, in the world of public, public records we're in, do you really want us to have a rec, a list around of all the people that aren't home for the month of November around City Hall? So I think that presents some liability in itself. So the chief and I talked about, we're going to discontinue that practice. I think the best thing for folks, if you're going to be out of town for a few days, let your neighbors know. You know, maybe you should have an alarm system. They've gotten a lot cheaper now with some of the technology that's out there. But, so I just wanted to share that with folks. Bay Street Pedestrian Path, I think if you've seen a press release and you saw a little blurb in our, in the newsletter that went out last week, we have re-engaged our right-of-way agent for property acquisitions on the pathway. The property owners should be hearing from our right-of-way agent in the next few weeks. Title reports and appraisals are being offer ordered at this time. And I think property owners should start receiving offers shortly after the first of the year. So I just wanted to publicly announce that so that everybody knows what's going on and what we're doing. And exciting news on the employment front, we have posted a building inspector position. And they conducted interviews last week. And our own Doug Price, who is our code enforcement officer, who has been working to get some of those certifications, is now been offered and accepted that job. And so he recognizes that he will need to do double duty, about half and half, until we get his replacement hired. And I saw late this afternoon, a, an updated job description for Mr. Price's former job for code enforcement offer, that officer that I'll look at tomorrow. And hopefully we can get that on the street very quickly. And that's all I have. Let's see here, department heads, Mr. Crocker, do you have anything else besides the budget?
No, I have nothing else tonight, thank you.
Okay, pretty budget centric. Let's see here, Mr. Bond?
Well, I had three announcements, but you made all of them for me. So I'm just going to supplement them by saying that next week at Work Study, we will have Rice, Fergus Miller presenting to the council to give you an update on where we're at with the Community Event Center project. And concerning Mr. Price being selected for the building inspector position, you know, we, we talked about adding a second building inspector before COVID really hit back in February. And between February and June, he went and passed all of his tests to get all these certifications. So it was sort of a surprise that he had the certifications. And then when he interviewed, it made me realize just how valuable he is to the city because of the broad skillset that he has. So I think he's going to be a really good fit. And he's got really good customer service skills. And I think he will be an asset to the building department going forward. And, but I hate to lose a good code enforcement officer. So that job description, by the way, for code enforcement is being updated slightly. The educational and experience requirements are being tweaked. And so the city council will be asked to approve those next, at their next regular meeting at the end of the month here. So hopefully we can get your support and get that job posted.
Okay, all right, Chief Brown?
Yeah, I just have a couple of things for council, so thank you, Mayor. We're continuing to do really good work on accreditation. We're about 40% done with, with some of the low hanging fruit, the things that we're already doing that we just need to apply proofs to. Mostly what we're experiencing is, for some of the delays are just issues of training and then our property room. The next item I wanted to advise council on is we started our Strategic Advisory Board last Thursday. This was a, a plan that we've been working on since about November of last year. And then COVID hit and made, made gatherings a little bit more difficult. So the, the idea behind the Strategic Advisory Board is to help us to develop our strategic plan, which is a three to five year plan of what the community and the electeds in the city want the police department to look like, what they want us to focus on. I've already had an opportunity to sit down with Councilmember Chang. I intend to do the same with the rest of you to hear from you individually. So our board is, is a representative group of the community, has nine members, represents education, business, faith-based, the military and at large. All nine members have very, very deep roots in the community and either continue to live within the city limits or operate businesses within the city limits. And we are still having that conversation for us by Steve Strand, who is the Executive Director of Washington Association of Sheriffs and Police Chiefs. Some of you may also remember him. He was the chief of Bremerton and he was the King County Sheriff for a short period of time. He's also the chief of Kent. We anticipate three meetings, a total of three meetings. So probably by mid-November, we'll have that portion of our plan wrapped up. Again, I'm hoping to speak with all of you individually to include the department heads, the sheriff and the other municipal chiefs. And I'll tell you this too, I mean, even with, with everything that's going on, it was an incredibly, incredibly positive meeting. I think that we can all agree that even with all the things going on with our society right now, especially as it has to do with policing and criminal justice, the majority of us agree on about 90%. And, and that's where we're going with this group. It's, it's incredible. One of the things that I'm hoping will come out of this, and I've asked them to make the recommendation, is a community advisory board, which would be an ongoing project, probably meeting quarterly. So something very similar to a town hall or an Ask Me Anything where I can come and present to the community what we're doing over the last quarter. And then they have the ability to ask me whatever questions that they would like. So I can answer anything that you might have, or otherwise that's all I have for updates.
Question for the chief, I think it's great that we're doing, taking this step to engage with our community and, and ask them what they want their police department to look like. So I appreciate the effort that's going on there. So Mr. Dorsey? Nothing? Okay, got enough going on in Public Works?
Funny. Okay. We got, we got plenty.
Got plenty going on, all right. I won't look for anything else then. Ms. Archer?
If Brandy would stop doing, accepting public records requests and if Charlotte wouldn't keep wrangling up lawsuits, it'd be awesome.
Okay, well.
Thank you.
Checking the mail then, I think.
Mark, I think you just got the evil eye for Brandy, so.
Very briefly, the governor, as you all know, has extended the proclamation with regards to the Open Public Meetings Act and the Public Records Act suspensions with regards to in-person meetings. That has been extended to November 9th. The other relevant proclamation that's been extended for municipalities has to do with the utility prohibition and the prohibition on disconnection of utility fees that is only currently in effect until October 15th. But I believe we're expecting a further extension if they can get the four corners to agree. Kit Kat remains in phase two, I believe. So reopening of City Hall is still suspended until you move to phase three. Happy to answer any questions about any of that.
We're wearing the stickers off the floor that nobody's walked on besides staff, but told everybody to stay six feet apart. That's okay, we've got more, we'll just replace them. Clerk Reinderson?
Just two things, we're getting closer to the public portal for documents. That's moving along, should have something up on the site here, the website, probably in the next couple of weeks. And then the other thing is I participated in the AWC RMSA Online Annual Meeting this year. And the city, because I participated, will receive a $500 scholarship for safety improvements. Typically, we purchase the crosswalk flags with those dollars. The other thing that we had also at that meeting is the operation committee elections. And I was up for reelection this year. So I've been accepted or voted in for my third term as the city's representative for the operating committee for our Association of Washington Cities. So that's all I have.
So Grant, Grand Brandy glazed over that, that portal really quickly. That's a big deal. We, to be able to have a portal, and this is where this laser fish tool that we're, we're developing and the electronic records are going to be so important to be able to direct someone, as, as we can get all, as many of our records as we can in this portal, we can direct people to that versus the tremendous amount of staff time that Mr. Dorsey and Brandy and Charlie are, we're spending, I think we've, we've estimated over $100,000 this year in staff time on public records requests. So that's, that's a big number and a lot of staff time. And that they're the public records, they're entitled to them, and they ought to be able to access them. And we're creating a mechanism for them to be able to get to as many as, you know, we're going to, we're working towards getting everything we can on that platform. So hats off to Brandy, Noah, our IT department, and everybody that's working on that initiative because it's a big deal. So that is it for staff. And anything for the good of the Order Council? Councilmember Lucarelli?
So given that we aren't having very much for chimes and lights, decorating a tree downtown is really important this year. And we have fewer businesses actually in business to do that. So I'm encouraging the council to once again sponsor a tree and any business or individual who wants to sponsor a tree to please sign up. Thank you.
Wonderful. Thanks for the request. Others, anything for the good of the order? Glad everybody, Brandy and I were fretting a little bit as the power was flickering today, whether you'd be blipping in and out. But I'm glad to see everybody made it and we made it to the meeting tonight. So with that, we are adjourned, we'll see you next Tuesday.
Bye, everybody.
Thank you.